All right, good evening and welcome to the November second Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting. He is being held virtually. And the planning board is holding this meeting because it is determined that the circumstances necessitating the emergency declarations by the governor for polio and monkeypox would affect or impair the ability of the public body to hold a meeting in person. And let me find the plan. All right, I ask that all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we take a seat. Again, this is the November second Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting. First, I motion of first first item of business tonight is the board had a chance to read the minutes from October fifth. Yes, I'll also motion to accept the minutes of October fifth as provided.
Second.
Second by Mike, any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
First item. Well, seller ARB review additional documents submitted for proposed ARB for sunroom addition to a single family dwelling on the existing rear deck. Said property is located at one ninety-one Roseland Road in Highland Mills and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, section two, one, three, block one, lot one oh three. Good evening. I know we had asked the applicant to resubmit the drawings in a clearer view. And we have gotten those. As the board had a chance to look at them.
Yep.
All right, Natalie, I know you had a few few things, not much.
Yes, thank you. Um, just to kind of recap at the applicant's last appearance, um, you did conclude seeker typing the action type two. You also decided to conduct individual site visits to review the visibility of the home and the proposed addition from the road and the view corridor. Um, the applicant did provide the supplemental materials, uh, clarifying many of our prior comments, uh, as you already mentioned, Chris. One of the first things I wanted to review with the board is, uh, with respect to the lot area and lot with, uh, requirements. Uh, the lot is undersized for the zone, so we've recommended that you review this with council. Um, the second is that the applicant's plan now lists the bulk criteria that's required for the zone except for coverage. Uh, we did a quick calc on our own and believe that it's complying, however, it should be, uh, demonstrated on the plan. We also noted that there are inconsistencies among the architectural plan and the projected water and sewer demand form with respect to the size of the addition. Um, so we've recommended that the area of the addition be confirmed and the materials revised for consistency. But ultimately, it's just like again, a consistency thing. I don't think it really ultimately impacts, uh, you know, the the planning boards review. The ARB form should be updated to reflect the total area of the home. That's a carryover from our prior memo. Um, and then with that, we just recommend that you discuss the results of your site inspection, um, whether you believe the home is visible from the queue view corridor. Um, and then, as we always know, uh, if it's not visible from the view corridor, the planning board has the authority to waive, uh, any part or whole requirements of the Ridge Preservation Section of your code, um, including materials and colors of the home, um, which the applicant has indicated that they plan to match the existing. At your discretion, you may waive or schedule a public hearing upon a determination of impacts to surrounding neighbors or neighborhood. And for the rest of our comments, um, I think they're relatively minor, and if the planning board chooses to act on this application or authorize a draft resolution be prepared, we think that they can be handled as conditions, uh, you know, that we would verify prior to plan the signing. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Natalie. Anybody have any questions for Natalie? The board get a chance to do a little drive by and take a look at the proposed, uh, property.
Yep, yes.
Anybody have any, um, comments or objections or feedback on what they saw?
No, not at all. Does Kelly have any input?
No, you determined this to be a type two at your meeting on, um, October fifth. I haven't gotten a GML response back yet, but it was referred on October third. And then the planning, uh, the public hearing is in your discretion. That's all.
Yeah, I don't think we need a public hearing, and I think we can go forward with the resolution with the conditions that Natalie set out.
I don't disagree with you on that one, Mike. And I think, um, as far as the pre-existing non-conforming of the law coverage, Kelly couldn't that just be handled during the permanent process by the billing department?
Well, I think that if you're going to authorize the drafting of a resolution, I would, I would confirm with Mike beforehand so that I include that as a finding just so you don't get, and I have no doubt that it is pre-existing legally, pre-existing non-conforming. I just need to him to make that finding so that you're not approving something that does require a variance. So, but I'll, I'll confirm that prior to getting you a resolution.
Okay, but we could still, if the board wanted to authorize a drafting of the resolution because we're not actually taking action.
Absolutely.
Okay. Oh, so I'll, I heard it so moved, so I'll make the motion to authorize counsel to draft the resolution of approval. With the conditions that Natalie, uh, have suggested and the wording that the board is making the determination that a public hearing is not needed in this case because it is not required in, uh, for the public interest. I get that close enough, Kelly? Okay, sorry, sorry, Claudia, I know that one ran on. All right, so do I have a second on the motion? Second by Tommy, any questions?
No.
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
I don't see the applicant tonight.
I think I see them, Chris, Diane Giordano Baselli. Is online.
Okay.
Okay, we're, we're on.
Okay, so.
John and Diane both sadly present and accounted for.
All right, Tom and Diane, you said you understand where where the board is authorizing um, a resolution to be drafted by council and then it'll be voted on and action taken at our next meeting?
Yes, yes, we did. It's, it's John, by the way, but.
John, sorry, sorry.
No problem.
You have any questions or concerns for us?
Um, no, no, I don't, uh, I don't think so.
Okay.
Just, just, just curious as to, I guess, to next steps, you just mentioned the next steps. I would just like to know, um, the formalities of the next step, like, like who will be notified and when and in what format?
So at the next meeting, the board has authorized, uh, me to draft a resolution. There will be conditions attached to that resolution. When the board takes action on it, it would be provided to the chairman for signature, the resolution. And then you would be provided with a copy of that to make sure that those conditions are satisfied. When those conditions are satisfied, um, you would send in the revised plans to Natalie for review. It's myself for review. And then we would have the chairman sign the plans once everything is signed, and then you can apply for a building permit. And I just made it sound really, really complicated.
Yeah.
But it's not.
So, so let me just back up here. So this is a conditional approval, right?
Yeah.
Conditional.
Yep.
No construction can start on the next step.
No, not until those board takes action and there's a few outstanding items that Natalie, uh, pointed out that you'll have to figure, you'll have to address with your, with your plans on your middle to the building department. But you will only have one more appearance in front of this board, which is next in two weeks on the sixteenth, right?
Okay, and those uh, and those conditions will will be made clear, right? Like.
It'll be right in the resolution.
Yep. They'll be right in the resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, and once you have the building permit, you can start.
Right, sounds like we're almost there.
Yeah, you are. Only one more time in front of us and it'll be quick and then you can handle everything offline between Natalie and the building department.
Okay, terrific.
Great, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So much.
Thank you.
Good time.
Thanks.
All right, have a good evening. Thank you for coming.
You too. Bye bye.
All right, next item on the agenda, Gardens at Harriman Station, discuss status of application for proposed transit oriented development. Said property is located on State Route seventeen in the Village of Woodbury. As known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, section two, four, three, block one lots one through twenty-five. All right, so I see Anthony Carlito and Steve, who's, who's kicking it off for us tonight?
Well, I'll start, but I'll turn it over to Carlito since it's really tra- traffic and transportation. Uh, just good evening. Thanks for putting us on the agenda, give you an update on, on, on where we are, uh, and, uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Carlito.
Hey, that's a lead up. It's gonna be hard to follow there, Carlito.
You really teed it up for me. Uh, so yeah, good evening, everyone. Carlito Holt with DTS Providence. Uh, just want to give a, a quick update on where we are on the traffic and transportation aspects of, of the project. Uh, we did have, uh, an initial meeting with DOT and Village Consultants back in June. And, uh, subsequent to that, we, we prepared a, a memo that outlines some base parameters that we circulated to DOT Village Consultants had our technical consultant workshop in, in the middle of August. Still waiting some final feedback on that base parameters memo. But, uh, we have gone out and done all the, the traffic data collection and all the traffic counts. Uh, I think we have a total of nineteen study locations, uh, that, that were in the, uh, approved scoping document and, uh, we're right now in the throes of the analysis. I think we have a, a fairly good handle on what we anticipate to be uh, roadway improvements along that route seven, that portion of Route seventeen, just based on history of, of the site and the, uh, different iterations of analysis we've done for different applications a- along the way there, but um, you know, I think what we're looking at is uh, traffic signalization at Grove Street, which has always been a, a problem intersection at, uh, right by the rail overpass. And then when we have the three uh, proposed, uh, site driver locations, actually one is existing, uh, at the MTA driveway location. And then we have two additional proposed locations along Route seventeen, all of which we're anticipating to be, uh, signaledized, have traffic signals as well. Obviously, this is all subject to final uh, review and approval by the villages consultants as well as DOT on the signalization and, and, and turn lane improvements that we anticipate. But, um, you know, everything that we foresee will be a substantial improvement along that, that Route seventeen corridor.
Sounds good. Anthony, anything you?
On a throwing? It's a light meeting for me tonight. No. No, we're just, we're continuing to work through the EIS, um, and, uh, it's been really helpful to have the ability to communicate with, um, the village, uh, as well as the DOT, so we appreciate that.
Um, so when do we, I know there was some questions last meeting about when do we and nobody's holding you, nobody's holding you to the fire on this one, when we can expect to maybe see the EIS? Are we six months away, a year away, three months away?
That's, that's, so one of the things that we're also doing, Chris, is, uh, we're, uh, we're in a well program right now, uh, we've, you know, through the, the series of, with, you know, when it was original approved, it was OR one well, which is on site, which was previously permitted back in the late nineties, uh, that permit is last. The well also doesn't meet today's current standards, so we're looking to renovate that well to meet current day standards. Unfortunately, it's in the buffer and we've been struggling with, uh, with the regulatory agency to, to get, to get a temporary permit to get in there and do that work. We're currently, as we speak, uh, also, uh, deepening two of the wells that were previously drilled. Uh, one we call the Caesar's well, uh, that was drilled and then another well that was recently drilled by the gardens and that works underway as we speak. Once those improvements to the existing wells is done, we could then go ahead and do our seventy-two hour test. So, uh, and that's obviously a very big item, a big piece to this puzzle, so we want to get that work done. So hopefully, if things go smoothly, uh, you know, over the next two months, we can get, complete that work and then finalize the document.
Okay. Um, does the board have questions for the applicant? Yep, go ahead, Rich.
Um, yeah, the last meeting, uh, I believe it was Steve, but I'm not sure. Uh, you agreed at some point to provide a financial impact on one or two other TOCs that were completed. So, you know, before we go too far down the road, spend a lot of money on your behalf, when do you think we'll get those?
Well, Rich, that's going to be part, we're part of this adopted scope is that we have to do fiscal analysis of this project, right? And then, and part of that chapter, so to speak, will be, you know, uh, historic data on other facilities similar to this one.
Is that six months, nine months, twelve months? An estimate?
No, no, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be part of the DEIS, you know, it'll be.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, feedback from the board?
Not this time.
So it sounds like from what you guys are thinking, we should probably tentatively put you on the agenda for February just as our, our check in, that'd be three months from now. Um, and if you guys get something in sooner, sooner. Otherwise, well, hear from you guys in February.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
Okay, next item on the agenda, OC BMW, review and discuss revised documents submitted for amended site plan and ARB for proposed changes to an existing car dealership showroom and services, service center, including the addition of three charging stations. Said property is located at one oh one Mary Lane and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, section two, two, five, block one lot ten dot four two one and ten dot four two one dash one. All right, good evening.
Uh, good evening. My name is Peter Catazone with Catazone Engineering. Uh, with me tonight is, uh, Sammy Ozder. He's the, uh, general manager of Orange County BMW. And, uh, we also have our, um, lighting consultant, Mr. Scott Daly, he's with us as well. Um, so I'd like to share my screen and, uh, I'm unable to do that.
Yeah, hold on, you should, now you should be able to.
Okay. Um, and I'll take you through, uh, the various aspects just very quickly. So, um, again, the, uh, the proposed, uh, improvements to the site are very minor. Uh, it's basically a facelift. Um, starting with the, um, go left to right, starting with the, the, uh, sales building. Um, the, um, improvements to that are to add a soffit, an eyebrow feature. Along these, uh, the south and the, um, east side. Uh, the previous application had that eyebrow going all the way across. Uh, you could see for, from our inset that we've stopped that, uh, eyebrow, uh, so it doesn't, uh, require a variance. Uh, there's some minor drainage improvements on the north side of the building. Uh, currently, the water from the roof, the runoff uh, spills to the ground and gets in between the building and the pavement. And it lifts the pavement. It's actually lifted the, uh, concrete pad, um, at this northeast door where the door is not, uh, very functional anymore. Uh, we're also, um, removing for parking lot lights and upgrading the lighting around the entire building. And upgrading the sightlights, though there are some sightlights that will be remaining. At this location, uh, the west side of the site, uh, there's an existing, um, sight light at, um, near this entrance, I just have. So. Um, turn it all the way. And there's some sight lighting at, at the rear. Oh, here's the sight lighting here. At the entrance, you could see the square with the arrow. The service building is again, uh, and, and right now the, the buildings are Lucabon. Uh, they're going to go to a synthetic stucco look. The buildings, uh, the sales building or the service building, uh, similar thing, it goes to a, uh, a stucco look. Uh, we are adding a, uh, soffit to this, uh, roof to kind of hide the, um, uh, the gable end. It's a very shallow, uh, pitch gable end roof. We're going to hide that beyond the soffit. The soffit will be open on the west side for drainage. So the roof pitch will be from east to west. And we're, um, adding some charging stations. Uh, there's one here at the island near the service. There's one against the wall at the service. And there is a third one, um, which will be over by the, um, this location. What we've done since last time is we provided some photos. Uh, the, the sales building was originally uh, stow, this synthetic stucco, so it'll give you a pretty good idea of what the product looks like. Uh, again, this will be freshly painted and, and cleaned up, but the, the remainder, the balance of the building will be the same texture, so we, we hope that that's sufficient to, um, to show, um, exactly, uh, what the, the final product will look like. Um, we did receive a memo from the planning consultant. And, um, just going down that real quick, uh, the general items, um, I think there, uh, nothing in that, uh, special permit is required. They have a special permit for the use for automotive sales and service. I'm going to skip ahead to the, uh, zoning. Uh, the properties in IB zone. Uh, we revise our plan as mentioned, this is number B one B. Uh, we've revised our plans to not require a variance. Uh, C is there's no changes to the parking spaces. Any repaving will be, um, uh, you know, I will return the same spaces that are there. There's no proposed changes to the, uh, the parking spaces at all, uh, utilities, there's no, uh, changes to water sewer. Again, um, with respect to the storm, the drainage on, um, the side of the sales building, um, we have two alternatives. Uh, what we'd like to do is put it below grade, but that may not be possible um, as a field condition, so we, we also have, um, a detail of a small basin, a yard drain at each of the discharge points at grade. Uh, lighting, uh, we're proposing to remove the four light poles and, um, replace those with, um, LED, um, uh, fixtures. Uh, one of the comments, they will be dark sky compliant. One of the comments was that there's spillage on to, um, um, Larkin or I guess they call it Marley now. Um, but, um, the, the, uh, the light in particular that's causing the spillage is the one that is uh, let me just go back to the site plan. It's this existing light that is right here that causes the spillage. That is a light that's, you know, it's an existing light. We're just upgrading uh, that light. We're happy, um, to, uh, while, uh, our lighting consultant kind of cover that issue. Uh, if he has any more to add regarding anything else we could do at that location. Landscaping, there was one, uh, shrub which would, we would move, that would be in the same area where the charging is going. Uh, we showed it is being moved. We will be putting the conduits in for this particular charging station, but, uh, the charging station may not be installed as part of this, um, fees, we may do that in the future. Um, again, let me back up to lighting. Yes, we'll turn the lights down to security levels, um, no later than ten PM each night. And then I guess we go into the, um, ARB before we touch on that, let me get Scott to, uh, respond to the lighting.
If Peter, so the lighting that's along Larkin Drive, um, I haven't physically been to the site, but thankfully through Google Earth, they drove through. I, we're actually going to improve it. Right now, there's got to be spillage there with the fixtures that are sitting there. Um, the lights that we're proposing are dark sky and, and forward throw. Oh yeah, you got a picture of Pete? That would be great.
So that's this fixture here?
Yeah, if you go to the right there, I think, or actually, I'm sorry, go straight along. There you go. So you can see those fixtures that are right there. Can you zoom in on those, the, the double head up there? There you go. So there's actually two lights right there. What we're proposing to do is have both of those lights facing the parking lot. So these two fixtures here are throwing light to the left and the right of the fixture and back, and their orientation is actually causing them to throw light on Larkin Avenue. There's no question about it. Again, the proximity of the poles, we can lower the fixture a little bit to try to reduce some of that light spillage, you know, but we're trying to work within the confines of the pole. Um, that's really the best we can do. I, I think this was, this was, this was the primary area, right? Was Larkin where the issue was?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the only other alternative, um, would be to you could, you could mount more of a floodlight on there as opposed to an area light and aim it down. You'll have no light going back. But technically, a floodlight is not dark sky compliant because it's amable and adjustable and you could face whatever direction you want. So that would be really the only other alternative would be to mount a floodlight on there facing the dealership and, you know, have it at maybe a forty-five degree angle so that all the light is going down. We could show photometrics of that, but that would just be a question of whether or not you guys would allow that to happen.
I'll weigh in a little bit since it's our common, um, so what our review of the lighting plan that was provided showed some spillage as you described along Larkin Drive, but also along the western property line. Um, Peter, are you able to pull up that plan just so that we can discuss it with the board and? Um, with that being said, um, understanding that the location of the existing light poles, uh, may be contributing to the spillage that is existing already. I know as part of the original approval for this site, it was a condition of that approval that the light levels be limited to point one foot candles at the property lines. That's also a typical requirement of the planning board for not just this application, but any application. Um, you know, our memo, I think, discusses and, um, certainly the planning board can consider an amendment to that prior action just because of the location of this property in an industrial area. It's primarily commercial, um, you know, that's something that, something that the planning board could consider if there is no feasible alternative for reducing the levels to comply. But I know, you know, as you suggested, there is some opportunity for improvement, right? The height of the pole or at the height of the fixture, I know you're replacing some of the luminaires, if there's an opportunity to, um, you know, select something that's a little less intense, uh, perhaps that would be helpful as well.
Uh, so we're also, what we're also doing is we're using the act, the fixtures have a, a form of backlight control on them to try to cut off as much of that as possible, um. I don't know if the client's going to get involved in dimming the exterior fixtures. It's, it's been my experience that that adds a whole layer of cost to. I don't know if the client's gonna get involved in dimming the exterior fixtures. It's, it's been my experience that that adds a whole layer of cost to things that most people usually take right off the table immediately. Um, my thought was to, again, maybe lower the fixtures a few feet on the pole because, you know, it's, it's gonna throw the light basically one and a half times a mounting height. It's kind of just a basic rule of thumb. So that back, that back spillage on Larkin, some of it will get cleaned up. We won't get all of it out of there, but it will definitely get better, um, if we do that. Um, you know, and again, these lights, my plan in talking to Peter, you know, with regards to the comment about the security lighting was at ten PM to turn the perimeter lights off and then have the building lights on as a form of, you know, of security lighting. So the intrusion over here wouldn't be any later than that. Um, just something else to, to keep in mind.
Is there any way to put a shield on, customize it a little bit?
Um, quick answer, I mean, sure, we, there's always, there's always something you do, but with these fixtures, the actual back of the fixture, the way the LEDs work, there's diodes on the back of them and they, they have a shield inside of there. It's called BLC backlight control. So it's actually already being done. The challenge is the fixture is, you know, we're showing it at a twenty-five foot mounting height here. So as you get up that high, you have spillage coming back behind them. Um, and we've even, even with a, you know, a fully cut off, no backlight, you still have some light going that way. That's why you've got, that's why you've got a kickback there. We tried doing it with one fixture, but again, there's right now, we're trying to go fixture for fixture because they want to maintain light levels that are there for security purposes. You know, for liability reasons, um, and we put one fixture on there, it drops the light levels way down, you know, below what's satisfactory to them. Um, again, maybe we can drop them, you know, if we can drop it six or seven feet. I can't tell, I'm trying to see on here where the property line is. I think the property line is only a few feet behind the pole, right?
Yeah, the property line is this, uh, dark.
Yeah, so I mean, it's really, it's, it's, it's almost impossible. I mean, it's really, there's, you, there's not much we can do right there without moving those. I don't, I don't, I don't think that's an option.
Well, it's, it's not impinging on any residential area.
Yeah, there's no receptor, uh, there and, you know, adjacent, um, is of course the, um, uh, the highway which used to be, uh, seventeen and what do they call it now? I eighty-six or?
Future eighty-six.
Future eighty-six, right? So there's no real receptor there. Again, you know, the, the levels are very low with, um, you know, we'll, we'll do our best to get that down within our abilities uh, during the installation.
Uh, Scott, is there other, another opportunity to lower the light levels along the other property boundary? Um, that actually faces towards Old Glory Mall and some of those other commercial uses that are existing. I mean, I realize that the fear isn't that high and to begin with.
So the mounting height will do that. If we were, if we pick up three or four feet right there, I, I honestly, I feel like we're gonna get, we're gonna get you where you wanna be. Because we're already, I mean, we're there, right? We're at, I think we hit point, we got point two, point four, we were hovering over there, so we're really close right there.
So what I would suggest for the board is, um, for you to consider whether or not the spillage onto Larkin Drive would be acceptable. Um, contingent on the applicant submitting a revised plan showing compliance with the point one foot candles along the, I think it's the northwestern property line. I could be wrong. Um, and then reducing the light levels as possible, uh, along Larkin. If you would consider that.
It makes sense to me.
We can consider anything. We're that, we, we're that group. I'm, I'm sorry, do, other than lighting, I, we, we, we kind of would talk about the site plan and we started talking about lighting.
Should I just pi- pick up on my?
Yeah, let's just go with.
So, that's okay. Peter, you did a great job going over my other comments. So I'll just kind of jump to, um, what I thought I would like to discuss with the board as outstanding issues. So the lighting we've already discussed. Um, the other, uh, comment that I wanted to raise for the board is related to signage. Uh, we did discuss this at the last meeting and, um, you know, I did take a look at some of the prior approvals as far as the one sign being considered a wall sign, and I do agree that that's the case. Um, and also I think that you've confirmed with this recent revision and also, uh, during the last meeting that there are no changes to the sign area or the signage proposed, only just relocating and remounting, uh, the signage. So that's something that I'd like you to just kind of confirm one more time for the board.
I was just trying to get my, um, my, uh, slide deck up here or multiple screens. I'm gonna try and do this side by side, but, um, wish me luck on it. Let's see, uh.
Because ultimately if you're not changing the sign area or the look of the signs, um, and it's what was previously approved, and if you can confirm that, um, you know, there's really no issues.
The sign, so I just wanna, I'll show you this view here. This is the Orange County BMW sign. This is the service sign. If we, you know, jump to the existing conditions. Um, this is the actual sign, um, instead of these pylons here or these, uh, brackets that go down to the ground. That will be, uh, a feature that's mounted to the building. So it is, uh, this sign. Uh, and if we look again at the, um, um, the service sign, which I hope I could see from here, uh, yes. Uh, um, this is the service sign and then, um, if we go to the videotape. You know, it's, it's basic, it's this, it's the same sign. Uh, so there, there is no, uh, change in the signage, um, on the entire site. Uh, Sammy, um, Ozder's with us and Sammy, can you confirm that?
Can you?
Maybe not. Um, but there is no, it's gonna be the same signage. We're, we're basically taking it down. We're gonna do the, uh, improvements. We'll add the.
My, my, my sincere apologies. Uh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I couldn't unmute myself for a second there, Ms. Barbara, if I may. I thank you for giving me the opportunity. The, uh, signage throughout the entire facility is not changing in dimension. Um, I think you had alluded to the font that also isn't changing. Also the BMW Ron Dell, uh, is still corporate idea that also is not changing. It is going from a fleet, uh, from a standing sign to be attached to the building. Um, as per, uh, BMW feature retail, um, uh, uh, corporate elements. So, uh, correct, it is not changing in font or size.
Okay. And then at the last meeting, the planning board, um, had some significant discussions about the electric car charging stations. And I think that, um, at that time you considered certain restrictions on how those would operate, basically being private only and not for use by the public, um, and have certain mechanisms that the BMW would control that, um, including on and off switches within the machines themselves and or swipe cards. So if that's something that the planning board, uh, would still consider, uh, we think that those could be conditions of your special permit app, like, app, um, action. Sorry. And, um, otherwise there is a public hearing that remains to be scheduled at the appropriate time. And, uh, I don't know if I mentioned already, but you did declare the action type two at your last meeting, uh, concluding seeker. Well, now Natalie's covered my report.
The two thirty-nines though, right Kelly? I don't think we got.
Yes, we're missing the two thirty-nine.
Okay.
Question on the charging stations. Right now you're planning on installing three of them, correct?
Correct.
And then you're putting in conduits for a possible fourth later on down the road?
Uh, no, let me correct, uh, let me correct myself. We are proposing three charging stations, um, two of which, um, will be installed at the service station, um, as part of this project. Uh, the one that's to the, um, let me just go to the drawing uh, that shows it.
So the sales department's not gonna have their own charging station? At this point?
The, the third charging station at sales may not be installed at this point.
Okay.
But the conduits will be installed for future.
And just one correction, I'm sorry, the two thirty-nine did come in, Chris. It is a local determination.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking right at it. Thanks, Kelly.
No, I was too, and I was like, wait, no, oh, so I just had to wait for that part to finish. But yes, it is in.
Okay. I'm sorry, Tommy. Any other?
That's okay. He answered my question.
Okay. Does the board have any other questions or concerns?
I think I would like to see the lighting levels reduced if possible. That's it.
I get them. I think, uh, that's a good idea, Evan. As much as we can get the spillage down, the better over there. Uh, gonna be a lot of, lot of, lot of light in that area once all the other development gets done on the other side of six. So whatever we can do to rein that in would be great. Boards, it, uh, feel like we got enough information?
Yep.
Go ahead, Rich. Sorry. Let me see it.
Yeah, I just have a, uh, follow-up question for Natalie, uh, maybe for the next meeting. Um, I did a drive-by the past weekend. And I noticed there were brand new cars up directly underneath the cell tower. And I, I thought it was some condition in the past. It had to be so many feet.
Um, there, there is a, a condition on the site plans. I think it's noted, um, on our plan set. Uh, don't quote me on it, uh, yet. Uh, but basically the restriction is not for new cars. The restriction is during, um, let's see, there should be a note. Reference here. And maybe I could find it on the plan, but basically during inclement weather, um, that, um, you can't have customer or employee cars. There, at the time of the approval, there, there was really not um, as much data as there is now regarding, you know, uh, ice sickles and things like that. Um, this is no different than, you know, icicles forming on the building. Um, so, um, the planning board at the time out of, uh, the abundance of caution said, hey, if it's inclement weather, you know, we don't care if a new car gets damaged, but we certainly don't want, you know, an employee or customer um, to, um, uh, you know, be subject to potential icefall. So I, I have to go through this, these notes, um,
It looks like it's.
That's the extent of the, um, restriction.
Peter, what you have on the, um, screen now, general note number eight, looks like what you were just describing. Um, and then Rich, does that answer your question?
Yep, it is number eight.
Yeah, thank you. So he's got roping off the area. Okay. Okay, got it.
Any other questions or comments for the board? Okay.
Uh, Mr. Barbara, I have a quick question if I may. Uh, you said proposed, uh, lighting on the other side. Um, ob- obviously, I'm sorry, that my apologies, but I wasn't aware of it. Um, Larkin Drive is, you know, pretty dark. There are no real lights around it. Um, and just because I, uh, you know, don't know what the future plans are. Um, I thought that, uh, spillage on it might help since I go home that way anyway with having a little bit more light on, uh, Larkin. Uh, we can obviously minimize it as part of lighting experts on it, but it does some that you would actually desire, but if there's future plans for on the other side of Larkin Drive, that obviously, I don't have that information. On the Old Glory Mall side, um, there are forty, fifty, sixty foot, um, uh, evergreens along this tire, um, uh, property line there. Um, I, if you were to go through that side, I mean, I know from a photo matrix perspective, it looks like there's some spillage, but I can't imagine that there, that there would, would be. But of course, we can always lower those lights as a lighting expert set. I don't have a problem with that whatsoever. It was just informational questions that I had.
We always like all applicants and sites to keep their light within the confines of the property lines as much as possible. Uh, you know, while I understand the concerns around Larkin Drive, it's not Orange County BMW's problem to light Larkin Drive. Um, so, uh, we would, if you can, you know, just work with your consultant and see what we can do to rein that in a little bit because, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot. I mean, I know it's not a lot, but it is a lot and it's, it's light pollution we like to rein in.
Makes sense. Thank you very much for, uh, listening to me, Mr. Gar.
Yep, no problem. How's the board feel about a public hearing? I think we've got enough information to move forward.
I think we're ready.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll offer a motion to schedule a public hearing for November sixteenth.
You're, you're breaking up, Chris.
We lost you.
I've said I'll offer a motion for November sixteenth for a public hearing. Second by Evan. Any questions? All in favor? Okay, so we'll see you by the, uh, we'll see you on the sixteenth for a public hearing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your time this evening. Have a great night.
You too. Uh, next item on the agenda, Hartman ARB eighty-eight Jefferson, review and discuss documents submitted for ARB and Ridge Preservation of a proposed two-story addition to an existing single family.
It's you're breaking up again.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The internet over here wants everybody comes home at night. Am I back?
Okay, so I think Chris just read the agenda for eighty-eight Jefferson and I'm guessing that Mr. Hartman, you're here for that one.
Yes.
Sorry, Chris, since you're breaking up, I'm just gonna tell Mr. Hartman to go for it.
Am I back? Am I, am I here again? Okay, thank you for, thank you for pitch hitting, Kelly.
Sorry.
Um, if I may start, um, this is, um, to sum up this project, it's a, it's the first time on the, uh, on, uh, the planning board. It's in addition to eighty-eight Jefferson Street. I did provide a booklet providing as much as information I can possibly give to the board. It was ten sheets. I know if, um, the board had a chance to look at it, I'll just quickly review it. Um, on page number two, it has the three D rendering from the proposed addition as well as the picture of the existing and the text map and Google map. Um, to the left is the picture of the existing, to the right is the three D rendering from the new. Um, it's hard to see because the addition is almost entirely in the back. It just extends a little bit on the left, so you just see a little bit extension on the front. From the front, you would only see a little bit of the addition, so it may look like the same image, but it, one of that, one is the existing, one is the proposed. Um, the next page is showing the pictures from the view quarter and from, from the view corner, looking at the site, from the site, looking at the, at the view quarter, as well as some pictures of some neighboring houses. Uh, um, the next sheet is the existing survey, showing the existing house, existing deck. Um, the way it is right now. Next page shows the, um, just a sketch, side sketch showing where the addition is gonna be and the new deck. So basically where the new addition is going to be, there is an existing deck. So we're replacing that deck more to the right of the house. Um, and then we have some existing and proposed floor plans. So basically this, the addition is a basement. And the first floor. Um, nothing on the second floor, this is the existing house as a basement for a second, but the addition only goes to basement. And first. Then, then I have the elevations from the four sides showing the new addition.
And it looks like Larry, there's a separate entrance to the, to the new addition.
Yeah.
I just, I, I gotta ask, because it says lobby on your drawing. So, what are, what are they? Doesn't, what do, what do we, what do we use it for? Does it look like we're adding, you know? Playroom or something like that?
Basically, basically, the person has, this is not adding a lot to his room, other than. The mikva on the bottom. And the. Sonor matap. So basically, he has the mikva where he can enter it from his house, as well as from the outside. And the sonar room, he can only enter from. And then the sonar, we can only enter from the existing house. And he'll be using, obviously, the existing steps for that. So.
And the mikva is a personal use mikva?
Yes.
Board?
So is it a lobby or more of a vestibule?
Um, basically, it's not only a mikva, it's gonna have a sauna and things like that. Um, so he has an empty people's office, if he's gonna have somebody over. He doesn't want him to go through the steps and everything to his house. So, um, those rooms is gonna be. Um, gonna have a sauna, maybe dry or wet sauna. Um. So that's why he, that's why it is. So that's basically why it has that, that, um, little empty way, yeah.
Got it, but not for public use.
No.
Any other questions from the board before we go to Natalie? Natalie, you wanna go ahead?
The distance between the existing pool and the addition, is there enough? Um, this between the existing pool and the addition. Um, there is, how much it is, I'm gonna have to put that onto the plan, I would estimate around, that's fifteen three. That would be around eight, eight to nine feet. Eight feet, no, I would say more like, uh, yeah, eight feet. What was zoning laws on that, Chris, as far as?
Isn't there a? Uh, Natalie, I would defer to you, but isn't there a separation requirement under the building code that's ten feet from the principal structure?
That's what I'm thinking, it's too close to the house.
It, it might be, but I, again, I defer to Natalie and to the building inspector.
I'd have to review the specific regulations and advise the board of. The next. Meeting, I'm not sure what the specifics are. I can pick up my report if you'd like.
Yes, go ahead, Natalie, sorry, I'm having a little trouble again.
Um, I did also have some similar comments on the application as the board already raised. Um, regarding the mikva and whether it was proposed for public or personal use. Um, some of the other, uh, questions on the floor plans that were submitted. You know, obviously, it identifies a lobby, but then there are also three what look like changing rooms potentially proposed, um. For the mikva, so, um, we asked for clarification in that regard. Um, obviously, if the. Mikva would be for public use, then there are different requirements under your zoning that would need to be considered. Um, but if the applicant's only proposing this to be private, then we would. Um, assume that you could condition your action requiring the same, but we'll defer to council or future discussions on that. Um, we also asked for the applicant to provide a bulk table on their plans, um. It was, or we checked the requirements of the R one A zone and a review of the sketch plan provided indicated that. The proposed addition encroaches on both the side and rear yard setbacks. Um. Our memo also notes that the existing home may not meet certain setbacks, uh, which should be confirmed by the applicant. Um, but nonetheless, we believe that the proposed, proposed improvements would increase the degree of nonconformity and may require a variance. Uh, so we recommend you review that with Kelly. Um, the rest of our comments on ARB enriched preservation, I'll just kind of run through them quickly. Um, we've requested that the applicant confirm their intent to match the existing colors and materials of the home. Clarify the size of the deck and the materials proposed for the deck. Uh, provide a table of floor areas of the existing home with the proposed addition and analysis of the size of the neighboring homes. Footprint and gro- gross floor area for you to consider, and that's part of your typical requirements or requests of these applicants. Um, for ARB enriched preservation. Um, we've also recommended that the applicant confirm visibility from the view corridor, I think some of that information was already provided, if I'm not mistaken. But I could be. I could be mistaken. Um, and also confirm if any trees will be removed to construct the deck and addition. Um, the only other thing I wanted to discuss with the board is that the applicant is proposing a white membrane roof, which is prohibited by your code. Under your rich preservation required or criteria, um, unless it's waived, uh, based on the development. Uh, being determined not visible from the view corridor. Um, and we've asked the applicant to review that and revise their plans as needed with input from the board. Uh, we. Note the projected water and sewer demand form was provided, uh, but we've asked the applicant to confirm any impacts due to the operation of the mikva. And adjust that as needed. Um, and then, other than that, we defer to council on your comments regarding seeker, public hearing and GML referral. That's all I have.
Thank you, Natalie, does the board have any questions for Natalie? Larry, I thought the, the mikva is needed to have rainwater. For use. So where is the collection system and holding going to be?
So basically, the. The line that came out in pink. Somehow on the plants, or maybe, maybe it was black white, so as you look on the mikva. There is right next to the house is like a little. Little, um. I'll share my screen in one second.
Thank you.
Right, that, here we go. Um, so basically, this is, this is the location, let me just grab a pencil. We'll be able to see that. Um, this is where the water is gonna come in, and I guess it's distributed, distributed like this.
So is it just gonna be from the roof gutters, or you're gonna have like a collection pond?
Um, this is just gonna be for the roof gutters. So it has a flat roof on top. Um, so basically, it's just gonna be. We're gonna have the water go, um, probably pitch towards the house, that's somewhere. Like in between the house. And the. New addition, I would say, like where the new addition meets the house. Is probably right above that.
Okay, I only reason I ask is some, be, before, some other applicants before have had, uh, rainwater like collection, uh, retention. Systems to, to make sure they have enough water, so this is.
That's for bigger mikvas, you'd need a bigger one, but something like this, you would probably just need a, a drain, small, um. It's, it's relatively small, this thing, it's, uh. Probably only five, seven foot, seven foot seven is the whole room. So the inside is around five feet by, it's, it's a relatively small one.
Okay. Does anybody else from the board have questions? Because it sound like probably the next step here would be for referrals to the ZBA for. Um, the variances for the increase in nonconformity.
I agree, Chris.
Alright.
Although, in the applicant's next submission, when they come back. Um, just following up on some of the board's questions and Natalie's, uh, memo. Uh, I, I've never heard of a private mikva, um, so I apologize, but I guess maybe just provide some explanation, like. Um, Evan was talking about, is it a lobby, is it a vestibule, because it looks like there's. Like a waiting room, and then three changing rooms, so just kind of explain that, otherwise. You know, if it is for members of the public to come in, we'll just take the other, the other route for it, um, but just maybe a narrative to explain. The breakdown of that room would be helpful. Or those rooms, I should say.
Yes, yes.
And, and.
I mean, there are. Um, a lot of them, especially in Woodbury.
No, why?
Okay, I just don't know.
We've worked it to before on, on private mikhs, you, you know, we for the board, it's just. We don't typically see the, the, like a lobby in three rooms, like we'll, we'll see the mikva, it's usually accessible from. The home directly for the, you know, for the.
Um.
Use, so that's why we just, that's why there's a little bit extra questioning around here, because there seems to be some extra roomage around the mikva. And I just made up a word, but.
Correct, um, again, the door from the outside, you're always gonna have some kind of. Door from the outside, even the most private mikva, because, um, there is some. Supposedly, then, you, you're not supposed to have a mikva in your home. Um, you're supposed to share it with. It's supposed to be, you're supposed to share it with at least one person during the year. And that person is not supposed to go through the home, but some people will have the door like. All the way in the back, and that person would have to go through the playroom and everything, but they can technically do it. Um. So, but, some of them, especially if you use it more like a, uh, use the mikva as part of a spa or anything else where you would have liked some people. I always put doors, um, directly into it, not through the house. Um, it depends mostly of the use of it, but again, I'll clarify that, I'll also clarify that white roof. That was done, that, that was a mistake. Um, just a color mistake, it's, it's gonna be black, since it's EPDM roofing. Um, it's gonna be black on top. Uh, this is just gonna be a flat roof. Um, and I'll clarify all the other comments as well.
Okay.
I just wasn't aware about that, um, restriction on the, I thought it was just a different bulk table. So I'll take a look at that and, uh. And see if we need to seek, uh, CBA variances for this.
Yeah, for the, the existing, for this, the side, I think it's the side and the rear setbacks.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, I'll authorize a motion to have Natalie, uh, draft a referral to the ZBA for. All and any required variances.
Well, second.
Second by Tommy, any questions? Go, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright, Larry, we'll see you when you get back from the ZBI.
Great, thank you.
Just one thing, with the, with the narrative. Even though it's a private mikva. It would be for family and guests, it wouldn't be just restricted to family.
Um, you, again, if it's a mikva, this one's not gonna be restricted, the, it's not gonna be restricted only for the homeowner. He's probably gonna have guests to it. Um, it's gonna be more like a spa type of, yeah, it's not gonna be just a mikva, it's probably gonna have a sauna, things like that. But, um. But, so this one is not gonna be restricted, basically, just, just for the family only, yes.
Yeah, I think what Larry was trying to explain, it sounds like, uh, with her Jewish law, that at least once a year, you have to share the mikva with a. Somebody else in the neighborhood, right? Did I, did I hear you right, Larry?
Yeah, so it's not. It's not, uh, there is such a thing, if you have one, it's like a little pears or something. In order to take that, if you let one person indoor in the year, it's not considered your own. Um, mikva, kind of.
Yeah, so, so just please include that in the narrative.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, Chris.
Yeah, Rich, sorry.
Yeah, so, on the, uh, S one O one drawing that you had previously. The existing pool, is that staying or going?
Uh, this is staying.
Uh, how far is that pool from the proposed addition? If you could put something on the next drawing?
Yeah. I'll, I'll put it a mention, and I'll also take a look at the code as well, um. So I'll have to check if there is a restriction and if it discomplies with it.
Yeah, it's in, it's in three, ten, twenty-five, Larry.
Three, ten, twenty-five, thanks.
Yep.
Because if it doesn't comply, he has to go for the zoning board for that also, correct?
Yeah, right, so it's, it's, it's up to Larry to figure out what he needs, or else he's just gonna.
Yeah, and. Go back. When Larry's looking at the code, also look at the building code, because I think there might be something in there too, and. Even though the ZBA may be able to grant you a variance, obviously, it wouldn't carry forward with the building code, so just compare the two, I could be wrong now. So.
Uh, I'll take a look at that.
I'm good.
Alright, any other questions? Larry, anything else from you?
No.
Alright, we'll see you when you, by the way, that, uh, that book is still crooked, and we'll, uh, we'll see you when you get back from ZBI.
Yeah, thank you.
Take care.
Can I just mention that I have a neighbor trying to get in, and. Is he allowed into the meeting, even though it's in progress right now?
There's a neighbor, there's somebody with the name of Poppy, but they don't have a first and last na- the last name, so is that who it is?
I'm pronouncing his last name correctly, C H I E V E L L E. Peter? He's tried several times and he's not getting in, he said he's waiting.
Okay, well. I only person I have waiting is a Poppy, P O P P Y, everybody else has been admitted to. The meeting, so is it possible that's what they're using as their? Zoom name?
Um, I have no idea, he's just sent me a picture saying the host will let you in soon, and.
Hold on, I apologize if the meeting goes sideways real quick. Okay, so I admitted the Poppy, there's, it still says joining. Then I have nobody else.
Be the first time it went sideways.
Yeah, I know, but we've been doing so good, and I'm trying, I've been try, I'm trying to. Keep the.
You can figure out the trigger.
Alright, so, Poppy just joined the meeting, is that who we were waiting for?
I just asked, is your name Poppy? I didn't get a response yet.
Alright, well, I have nobody else.
He said no.
I, I.
Oh, he signed out of it, I'll, I'll tell him to try again, okay?
Try again, and as soon as he pops up in the waiting room, I'll let him in.
Thank you.
Particular application he's waiting for?
The last one, all mine.
Okay, so we got a few minutes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, uh, next item on the agenda, Fisher, review and discuss revised plans. An ARB submitted for proposed two lot subdivision on Scotty McRoad, said property is located at seven Scotty McRoad. In Highland Mills, and is known in the Village of Woodbury tax maps to section two oh four, block one, lot thirty-six dot two. Right. You, right, David?
Yes.
Alright, good evening, sir.
Good evening, everyone, it's good to be back, I know it's been a while since, uh, we've, uh, been before you for this project. Yet, um, we've made quite a bit of progress, I believe the plans in front of you or, or with this submission. Addressed many of the comments that were in the Natalie's previous, uh, comment letter. Some of it had to do with the existence sewer, tree locations, tree sizes, uh, a few details that were needed. Pictures of the surrounding homes. And, um, basically, m- most of the effect nature of work, and I believe we did include that within our submission. We were able to review her latest comment letter, and. Uh, for the most part, we, um. Agree with the first three pages, and, uh, we can address those comments, uh, readily. And easily, and be able to move the project along. I did note on page four, uh, her comments regarding, uh, the survey. Notes and elevations, and so we passed that along, uh, to the surveyor, uh, making comment that, uh. The. Assumed elevations would not suffice, and he would have to comply with the NABIT, uh. Eighty-eight. Requirements, so, you know, we're expecting to do that within the next, uh, submission, and. Uh, the last few comments regarding work that would need to be. Uh, associated or performed by to the building permit. Uh, issuance, uh, on five, six, and seven, I believe we included that in, as a note in our plans on C three plan, uh, so. I would imagine, you know, that these items have been addressed. In addition to that, I really don't see anything else that would stop us from moving ahead, uh. We, despite the, uh, lack of elevations. We, despite the uh, lack of elevations. According to the requirements needed by the surveyor, I'm thinking, I'm hoping we could go to two thirty nine referrals and start getting comments back. Also from the uh, Woodbury Water and Sewer Department, I'm hoping the board would agree.
Well, it was referred to to the county under GML and a local determination was received. Back in March of twenty twenty one, so should be good with that one.
Great.
Okay, um, sorry, does the board have any co- questions or comments for Natalie? Okay, Natalie, you wanna go ahead with your report?
Sure, um, you know, I appreciate David's intro and um, you know, his indication that. Um, they'll comply with the first three pages of our memo and that the relatively easy lift, um, I'll review some of those comments. Uh, with the board quickly, um. So, uh, just with respect to the history of the application, because I think they've only really been before you, like maybe. A few times, three times or so, but over the course of a few years. Um, you know, the applicant previously received variances for reduced lot area associated with lot one and a reduction in the side yard setback. Requirement for lot two, other nonconformities have been reviewed by your building inspector and determined legally preexisting. Um, there are some issues with the plan, um, where construction is required to create a conforming lot. Um, so those are the plans that David was referencing, or sorry, the comments that David was referencing in our memo that requires certain demolition of structures. Um, to, you know, achieve compliance, so we've recommended that those uh, be required to be completed prior to building permit. And they are included as notes on the plans now, um. One of the things that I think remains to be submitted is the projected water and sewer demand form, and that's just a typical requirement of the board. Um, the proposed subdivision is in an area served by municipal water and sewer. Um, our memo, this memo and our prior memos note that there is an existing well on the site. Um, to prevent cross contamination, we're recommending that that be decommissioned in accordance with DEC requirements. Um, and really, it's cross connection between the municipal water supply that serves the existing home and the future home. Um, that's the concern there, so uh, we'll assume that that the applicant will comply with that recommendation. Uh, we've asked for uh, information on the location of the existing water and sewer services, if they're known, they should be added to the plan. I think previously the sewer service was shown and now it's been removed, uh, so we'll look for clarification on that. Uh, we had some several other minor comments on the details and information for the water services. Um, we noted that the sewer service uh, details were changed from the last plan and are consistent with the county sewer requirements. Uh, we don't really take exception to that, but we noted that there is a lot of extra information, um, as part of those details that aren't really not applicable to this plan. Um, and if the applicant could clean that up, that would be appreciated. Uh, we did discuss the cleanout locations for the proposed home with uh, Mickey, uh, your sewer administrator. And we've included their recommendations in our memo. Um, so I think on a, the next submission, I would recommend that that plan be reviewed with the water and sewer administrator, and what we typically do is. Review the projected water and sewer demand form and the plans at the same time. Uh, with with your uh administrator, so that would be my suggestion in that regard, I know David, you just asked about that. Um, we had some comments on the trench and restoration details for which we think you could apply. Uh, the erosion and sediment control plan was removed from this set, we've asked for that to be added back in. Um, a meets and bounds description of the proposed lots is required, um, as part of your subdivision plat code for preliminary and final approval. Uh, so that remains to be provided and that information should also be on the plan.
Yeah, we do show that on the subdivision plan, are you looking in addition to that for it to be in writing, a written description?
There's typically a written description and Kelly can correct me if I'm wrong, but also, um, all of the boundaries of the lots should be. Include the meets and or the bounds and courses, uh, bounds and bearings, um, courses and bearings, sorry. Um, so each lot line should reflect that. Um, and that way we can confirm our closure calculations and check that everything is appropriate. Um. You've already discussed the survey and the plan elevation, so we appreciate that update, and just for the board's benefit, right now, the plans show. Um, approximately five hundred feet in elevation and above and below. Um, but really, this area is at an elevation of eight hundred feet, um, so that should really be updated to be correct. Um. We've also attempted to identify the certifications that'll be required, um, you know, for filing with the county and your approval. Uh, we appended the code requirements for Platts so that the applicant can re- review that and confirm compliance on their next submission. Um. You, David did provide uh, the locations of trees greater than, I think, twelve inches diameter on the plan, um. So with that being said, our review indicated, seemed to indicate that. Removal of those trees, um, okay, thanks. Uh, non-reflective windows are a requirement of your code, so that should be added to the plans if not done already. Uh, we believe the ARB form has been revised to reflect the current proposal. David already mentioned the photographs of neighboring homes have been provided, so we recommend you consider your similarity and dissimilarity criteria of your code. Um, and otherwise, a public hearing remains to be scheduled. Uh, Kelly's prepared a part two AF for you to consider, uh, and in your advancement of seeker, and I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Natalie, any questions for Natalie? Comments on ARB? Very quiet crowd tonight.
I have that effect.
You just beat everybody down, they're just like, whatever he wants, give David whatever he wants.
Oh, from your lips to God's ears, that's for sure.
So are, are we okay with what they, what's been submitted and proposed for the site, is that what our silence is?
Yeah, I'm okay with everything right now.
Okay.
You too.
Alright, thank you.
I'm sorry, I need to get some sort of feedback for the record.
I think everybody was just anxiously awaiting my comments, that's what it was, they were like, wait, we don't want to slow her down.
No, no, we don't want to slow, we're gonna catch you, we gotta talk about the AF part two and easements and all that other fun stuff that you lawyers like to talk about. We usually, usually like to beat David up over colors and balloons, so I wanted to see if we wanted to do that.
A little balloon test?
You gotta let that go, I can't, I can't have that hovering over me like this.
Forever, it's gonna happen.
E- every pun intended, too.
Yeah, I see what you, I see what you did there. Oh, but see, like, we're good with design colors, yeah, design colors where everybody's good with, right?
Yes.
It's, oh, okay, just getting the board's feedback on that one, alright, Kelly, I know you got a, a few things to throw at us.
Yeah, so the first was, just so the board knows, there was an error in my memo to you, the public hearing on this is not discretionary, it is required, as Natalie said. Um. But I just wanted to just point out one thing, I remember it came up and was discussed at the ZBA hearing, and that is that the. Applicant has identified the proposed use of the masonry building as an accessory garage structure. But during the ZBA public hearing, apparently it also may house a well, so. I think the applicant should clarify if it does with Natalie, and then if so, you know, the board has to determine whether it can actually be used as a garage or how it's gonna be used. Um, the second issue is that the existing easements should be provided to our office to review. Um, as it was noted by the chairman, the ZBA did grant two area variances. Um, a point zero nine acre lot size variance for proposed lot one and a seventeen point eight foot side yard variance for proposed lot two. And I did provide you with an SEAF part two for your consideration and. I'm seeing now that uh. Some of the check marks did not come through, so I don't know if they did for all of you, but when I re-scanned it, it did, but then I'm, some of it it didn't. So, that being said, I'll just quickly go through it, um. As per my usual practice, if there is an arrow on the right side of the page, that indicates that there's a small impact rather than no impact. And I did have an arrow for will the proposed action result in a change in the use or the intensity of use of land, and that's because there would be an additional home. It would be subdivided. Um, will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies, public or private wastewater treatment utilities? Um, obviously additional usage, and then will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna, and that came from the results of the part one. Uh, but none of the questions in the part two were answered moderate to large impact may occur, so. I apologize if it did come through with only arrows and like one checkmark, um, but I have since actually drafted this one. A while ago, as it's dated March twenty twenty two, and found out that a lot of them were happening like that with the DEC's. Way they did it, so as you've seen in recent ones, I have changed my strategy and I use annotations. So it would be an X instead of a checkmark, but I don't know if anybody had any questions, or anybody finds that as amusing as I did.
You lawyers.
Probably not on the second part.
You lawyers, you know how to have all the fun.
I'll tell you, wild partier.
This is shaking it up, you know?
Almost like those architects.
Hey, we know how to have a good time, right?
You're just trying to raise the bar.
See how high he can get it?
Oh.
Wow.
I have, I have a question before we move on, uh, you you had asked us to provide some documents, what what documents are they?
Of the, any existing easements that are referenced on the plan to be provided for our review.
Given how Kelly could, oh, wow, elegant, we, I can't speak, use the English language anymore. Kelly went over the EF part two, I'll offer motion to declare ourselves lead agency and issue a motion, uh, a neck deck.
Again.
Second by Evan, any questions?
Yeah.
All in favor? Board feel, we have enough uh, information to move forward to a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, I'll offer motion to schedule a public hearing for uh, November sixteenth.
Second.
Second by Michael, any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Yes, uh, public hearing, we're good on ARB, um. What am I, what else, that's, that's it, I think for now, right? I'm not missing anything else.
Yeah, just for Claudia for the minutes, um. It's, they assumed lead agency.
Yes, and we should.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just.
Assume.
Assume. I'm very picky, you know. Sorry.
Alright.
Just to uh, uh, remind me, Village Woodbury sent out the public notices themselves, right?
Yes.
Put it, uh, put a public hearing, okay, great.
Yeah, we take, they, uh, building department takes care of that for you.
Fantastic.
It's cute, they tie a little ribbon in the balloon and they drop it off at everybody's house.
At least, you know, some infamities better than uh, nothing, right?
Yep.
I appreciate that.
Hey, listen, I learned in the fire service, when they stop breaking it, stop making fun of you, you gotta worry.
That, that, good point, and if people stop laughing, then you also have to worry, see Natalie smiling for this whole thing, so it's all good, and Kelly too, right?
So, well, we're good, I think, we will see you on the sixteenth.
Uh, absolutely, thank you again. Take care.
Alright, so I still see just, I know someone was trying to get in, I still don't see anybody sitting in the waiting room while participants have been let in. Uh, next item on the agenda is all my, all mine of Orange County. Review and discuss revised plans submitted for proposed lot line change. Ridge preservation ARB for a proposed single family home located on Skyline Drive. In Highland Mills and is known in the Woodbury Vill- Village Woodbury Tax Map, Section two oh eight, block one, lot thirty, three dot thirty one and twenty one. I do just want to remind the, the public that is watching this meeting tonight, this is actually not a public hearing. For this uh, application that will come with due time and will be noticed appropriately, this is just a. Discussion right now between the applicant, the board and their consultants. Alright, so who is representing?
Good evening, I'm Stephen Green.
Alright, good evening, Steve, how are you?
Good, seems like I'm my glass.
It has been. Almost a year probably, right?
Um, well, Mike Morgani's here too, so, uh, I guess it was. I'm not positive, um, but, but whatever case is on it, I guess uh, there was some revisions brought up back. I have a single family home going on a two acre lot, uh, and uh, there's two parcels. One in the front is. Uh, twenty by a hundred foot strip. And the parcel in the back is the two acre lot. So. I received the comment letters and one of the biggest questions was the driveway access. Cutting across the front portion of the neighboring lot, which I believe is um. I forwarded paperwork to Kelly, uh, a little late in the afternoon, but. That kind of explains the access way we have through the property, um, there's a deed that was written back in about nineteen sixty eight. That exchanged the rights of both parties to cross the ru- property. And what it was, was this was intended to be a portion of a roadbed, which is, um. It's, it was thirty feet originally designed, and it's called Summit Avenue. Let me see here, turn around some. Yeah, Summit Drive, so there's an older subdivision which showed that strip going down in. To the larger piece in the back, and at some point had been cut off and added to the lot, I believe it's two thousand nine, was added to it. So, that is the biggest. Issue, I guess I was dealing with, uh, when we were looking at this, so. Again, I forwarded the description to Kelly, showing the cross to access on. Now, at some point in time, this road was supposed to be or can be. Um, dedicated to the town, if the owners so wish. To do so, I believe it's what it says, but at the moment, it's just the rights of each other across, so. That's. That's what I've got right now.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, Summit is not the name of any road in any, but.
Of course not, because we're talking about something that was done in the forties, so the road has changed names possibly due to nine one one. Um, and you really uh, would have to look at the older submap to s- to see. How the road came down and around.
Yeah, I think it now starts with an E, what's the road name there that starts with an E?
Elmwood.
That's it.
Yeah, that's what it is, so that road changed names at some point in time. When? I don't know, I could ask nine one one, but I don't know if I get a good answer on that.
Yeah, I think.
If anything.
The current plan needs to reflect the current names.
Uh.
Yeah, the current plan still says Summit, so I think it might cause some confusion for. The neighbors, so that part might need to be updated, where's Mike?
Yeah, and a lot of the property attributions are incorrect as well.
Yeah, I've been dealing with a survey from back in two thousand from Jerry Zimmerman, and. That's where this information's coming from, um, it's referenced on uh, the sheet, first sheet, and. There was a lot of different, I guess, nomenclature for roads, and obviously there was a whole different section block and lot numbering system back then than there is now. And I'm methodically working through this to make those changes, uh, I think I've captured probably. Ninety eight percent of them, but there's still a couple of things like that that are outstanding that I've gotta tie together. That's not an issue for us to revise the road name, uh, nor address any um, incorrect section block and lot numbers that still exist.
And I know that access is still an issue, um, to the board members when. The meeting first started, I said there were phone calls that I didn't get to call back. Was to discuss access with uh, the two representatives today, so. My apologies, um, but I did receive the email, I had, I didn't get a chance to review it today.
And it's fine, now, um. In all fairness, when the original application went in, this was two separate lots. And, you know, when she asked about the section block mods, it didn't make sense to me, that's why I did some research on it. And the numbers are actually correct based upon the original submission, so. It kind of clears up the actual um, answer she had, but yes, it should be corrected on the map, so.
Natalie, why don't you um, go ahead with yours, I know there were quite a few comments you had from the application itself.
Sure, so, um, just a little bit of background, um, I think this applicant was last before you in twenty twenty. Sure, so um just a little bit of background, um I think this applicant was last before you in twenty twenty, so it was a couple of years ago. Um and at that time, the proposed home was going to be developed almost in the same location as it is now. But access uh to the home was proposed through um. I just lost the name of the road already.
Carpenter off Cedar.
Cedar, thank you, from Cedar, Cedar through what was formerly Skyline Drive, um that. Portion of uh, you know, basically. Let me just move on, okay? So the at the proposed access to the home has changed from Cedar, it's now proposed through Elmwood. And basically, the applicant is proposing a long driveway connection through the small parcel. Um I think it's lot three point three one um now to Elmwood, so uh it's changed in that regard. Um and ultimately, uh as part of that prior approval, the applicant was proposing to eliminate the lot line between. The small parcel three point three one, and I think it's lot twenty-one is the um larger parcel that's actually proposing to be developed with a home. Um so with that being said, uh we had a number of comments, uh you know, that would normally be considered as part of like a site plan review, although. This is not a site plan review, it's for ARB and Ridge Preservation. Um and really those comments that we listed in our memo regarding like the driveway length and turnaround for ESOS is something that we think that the applicant should consider as part of good planning. Um but let's just get back to, I think, some of the more threshold issues um that are sort of in the front, the front of our memo. Um so one of the things that we noted regarding the lot width and frontage are that there may be variances that are required. Um and I'll kind of defer to Kelly on how the board wants to handle that, but um with. Boy, the reason we noted that is because as part of the prior submission. There wouldn't need to be a variance because of the frontage would then be on the formerly Skyline Road. And the lot width would be calculated from the formerly Skyline Road area, which is substantially larger than. The hundred feet and the nineteen point one four feet that you obtained from the three point three one parcel. So just how the lot is developed kind of impacts what I think would ness- would sort of be the variances that are necessary. Um the one other thing, I'll just kind of go through them. So then the next thing that we brought up was the status of the offer of dedication. Um so Steve Green mentioned that, um and I think even the applicant's materials indicated that. The offer, it was like the right to offer that parcel for dedication, but that the offer for to get a dedication never actually occurred. Potentially, um so our comment was that the applicant should um or that you could review with counsel. Like how that offer is impacted based on the development of lot three point three one as a driveway for lot twenty-one. Um we also talked about the access to a public right of way, so a variance was received previously. For a two lot subdivision um in this area, and it was a two eighty A variance when the town was the town, now it's the village. And it's a seven, seven thirty-six variance that would be required. So we've asked council to confirm whether or not that variance still stands, but ultimately, um you know, for a lot to be developed, it should be. Or should have direct access to a road improved uh by village standards, so it's not clear. If um the access through three point three one provides that, um. We talk about the common ownership of the lots, three point three one and twenty-one, and if you've totally lost me, I apologize. Um but essentially, what we were getting at is if lot twenty-one is developed and obviously has the driveway through three point three one. Then some mechanism we believe should be in place to prevent sort of, you know, the sale of one lot or the other. That would essentially preclude uh access through three point three one to twenty-one. Um in the future, so some mechanism should be considered for that, uh we believe. And then also, we talk about uh lot eighteen point two, which is um. Located approximately south of this proposed development, it's a large parcel. Um that, you know, was set up sort of for a future subdivision, and that's sort of where these issues with access come into play. And and the weird lot lines in that area, we believe. Um and ultimately, the driveway that's proposed to twenty-one crosses a portion of lot eighteen point two. Um so there should be an easement in place that would um, you know, allow the property owner of twenty-one. Essentially to use that access and also maintain it. Um our memo also discusses the large drainage easement that spans across the property. Uh the applicants proposing to construct their driveway across that easement. So we've asked uh them to provide that legal document for council to review. Um and whether or not there are any restrictions from essentially developing that area. Um it's not known at this time. The other comments I kind of mentioned are issues for the applicant to consider as part of their plan. Um we talked about the alternate access uh through to Cedar um versus Elmwood. Um and then the rest of our comments. Kind of go into your ridge preservation criteria and your ARB criteria, so. Um we also talk about an alternate layout of the lots, and I think that kind of ties into the ridge preservation criteria. So right now, where the home is located. Kind of requires that long driveway, significant amount of grading and construction in that area. Um it's also located at the top of a ridge line, um if the applicant has not considered this already, we recommend they consider. Uh moving the home closer to where lot three point three one is. Um you know, that would shorten the driveway, and again, there are some. Implications for doing that, um you know, obviously where the drainage easement is located and because the um. Lot is smaller, essentially in the width that we talked about before, in that location, there's less room, say, to construct, you know, a large home. Um but since variances may be required anyway for this application, it's something for the applicant to consider, um. You know, and also for the board to consider, um you know, i- if you think that that's appropriate. So that's just one thing we wanted to point out, um. The plan or the ridge preservation criteria has been revised um since even. Uh we think that the applicant uh last reviewed them, I think your your correspondence indicates it was based off of. January twenty twenty-one um code adoption, so that was modified again in October of twenty twenty-one. Um so we've asked you to kind of consider. That new criteria and any changes that are therein. Um the applicant did provide uh sightline plan and profiles for you to consider visibility from the view corridor, uh that would be from Smith Grove Road in the throughway. Um so you can consider whether or not um you think that's appropriate. Also, uh we know, again, just the ridge preservation criteria recommends you consider the use of lower elevations on a lot. To cite the structures, blending of structures with topography to keep it below the tree line. Um every attempt shall be made to limit the amount of cutting and removal of trees so as to maintain natural site vegetation. Um especially when those properties may be visible from the ridge preservation view corridors, so those are some of the things um we mentioned for the board to consider. Um as part of locating the home, maybe in a different location on the lot, um. What else? We discuss um the ri- the removal of trees associated with ridge preservation. So um there are certain recommendations in your code that um again, the amount of cutting and clearing be limited. Um that trees greater than eight inch diameter be uh pres- be preserved except where essential to. Uh construction of the structure and for safety considerations. Um you, you haven't, you have required uh tree surveys in the past, uh so we've recommended you consider whether or not that would be appropriate. Um in this instance, again, this is all bridge preservation uh criteria issues. Um the applicant should provide colored renderings in ARB form for you to consider the proposed colors and materials of the home. Um the code requires the use of certain materials and colors that blend with the tree cover in the surrounding environment. Uh so that should be considered by the applicant in a future submission. Um also, the code uh recommends an illustration or sketch of the home superimposed on the natural topography. Uh so you can consider not, whether or not you would prefer that to be provided in this instance. Um the use of non-reflective windows is also a requirement that should be indicated on the applicant's plans. Um you've asked for other ARB applications, photos of neighboring homes for you can sit. For you to consider the similarity and dissimilarity criteria of your code. Um as well as tables of floor areas, gross and building footprint to um compare to other homes to the proposed structure. Um we had some comments on utilities, again, um for the applicant's benefit. Um what else? We had some minor comments on the EA F, um. Just kind of cleaning that up, it still indicates a lot line removal is proposed. Um and then we also indicated that uh response yes should be uh to zoning board of appeals approval, but I guess that's to be determined. Um. And then just the rest of our comments are just those cleanup items, uh street names and and lot designation, so. That is my memo in detail, sorry about that. And um if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer them, but again, I think those um sort of threshold considerations can be reviewed with Kelly. And then that issue about uh locating the home for potentially in a different location on the lot, um I think is worth discussion.
Thank you, Natalie, I know there's a lot, you threw at us, there's a lot to consider and talk uh, talk about here. I know Kelly not gonna put you on the spot about talking about access and easements, but I just have a quick question, a two eighty A, which is a town. Uh variance from the town zoning board, do those have expirations on them?
No, the variance is generally run with the land, um I can talk to you briefly about that one, I did look at that. That was the two thousand and two, two eighty A. Um in that instance, the two eighty A variance was granted. Uh obviously, two eighty A under the town and Natalie cited the the provision under village law. But it was granted only to allow a two lot subdivision, so that subdivision was apparently never filed. And this application doesn't involve a subdivision, so that two eighty A at this point is not viable, it does not relate to this application. Uh but just generally, should they have proceeded with, you know, a two lot subdivision and everything had remained the same, that would still be in. Uh available.
So then we do, um, you do a lot merger right now?
Now, I think a lot merger is is um with the little. Oh Natalie, is it three point three one is the little one? Okay, that's, I'm like, there's a not a lot of numbers that are going on back and forth.
Kelly, can I interrupt for one second? I just want to add some context to your comment about the two lot subdivision. Um our original application was a two lot subdivision, it was modeled after that variance that was granted. And at that time, we were told that that variance and our proposed subdivision. Um were not similar enough for it to be considered.
That's probably true. I didn't look at your prior application when I just made that statement, but I was looking at it as tonight, you are not proposing. Any two lot subdivision, but Mike, you bring up a good point that I did want to just touch on. Is that the application materials tonight said that there were. The the applicant requested that the board consider the plan that's currently presented as well as the prior plan. I think the applicant should determine which of the plans that it does want considered, so that the board can provide the appropriate review. At this time, I think we're propose, we're considering the one that comes off of. Elmwood, if that's right, that road.
Let me add a little context to that, we, so Natalie's comment letter is discussing like all of the environmental disturbances associated with this plan is before you now. We recognize that coming into this the first time around, which is why we had proposed access off a cedar. Uh we thought that we could probably get access through Cedar on the skyline. There would be a lot less environmental disturbance and is what's shown right now. Um so that was like one of the goals originally, but. And if I'm not mistaken, I think Steve handled that part of the application where we went before the village board to try to work out some type of.
Yes, and that did not pass for the village.
It does not work out, so we tried. But what I'm getting at is that this is our alternate option, so when I'm asking the board to consider the old plan, it's simply from the fact that. It certainly provides a lot less environmental disturbance than what you see here before you, that was the context of why I was saying, can we still? Not throw the old, the first plan I had out the window if that may be a better viable option than this one, if we can revisit. Which is the lesser of the two evils here? That, that was my only purpose.
Okay, well now. You lost me a little bit, so I'm just gonna focus on the application that we're, that we're looking at tonight, because you got access issues with both of them. Um but what I was going to say about the lot point uh three point three one. Is that one of the access issues that we have to deal with is easements. Right? Um and you obviously, you can't have an easement over your own property, it it automatically extinguishes itself, so that's one thing that we're gonna have to work with the applicant on. To resolve and get those issues squared away, so that there is adequate access to access the property as discussed in this application. But as I mentioned earlier, I did not get a chance to review Steve's email, so I would be able to provide the board with more information and responses on access. At a future meeting date, so Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you not putting me on the spot tonight.
Well, I don't want to put you on the spot because it's, it's a crux, to me, it's the crux of this applic- application at this point, we. And we really can't move forward until we can, in my opinion, we can't move forward until we've settled on the, on the access here. And and how that's gonna be handled.
It, it probably would be best, um I mean, it's easy enough to contact the assessor. And we can do a combo request for the two lots, um twenty-one and three point three one. It, it, that's a five second deal and just a renumber on the lot, but um.
Yeah, I think that solves one of the big issues.
Yeah. That's, that's, that's easy enough to handle, but.
Yeah.
As far as the access, what I emailed you, if you'd like to go over it when you have time, um we can.
For a second, I thought you were gonna say, if you'd like to open it up and take a look tonight, I was gonna be like.
Well, it's been this long, so you know.
I mean, it's been a couple hours, Kelly, did you, did you need to eat? No.
I haven't eaten yet either, so.
Um well, I I will take a look so that I can.
Have a chance, we'll take a look.
Yeah, so I can advise the board on the access and the project can move forward.
But from what I read, lot twenty-one accesses it based on that right of way, that agreement, so. Once we eliminate the lot, twenty foot strip, then it wouldn't be a problem, shouldn't be a problem.
And I'd, I'd be certainly glad to merge the two parcels, I mean, it was my original proposal was the first, in the first submittal, I forget the reasoning why that was. Um recommended against, but that's not an issue for us to combine those two lots.
Um I'll weigh in on that actually, Mike, because I think it was part of our comments on the prior submittal. So when the home was proposed for access through to Cedar. Yes, um. That lot, the combining of the lots didn't really seem to provide much benefit to you, um in the sense that it didn't really, you know. Change your lot area or anything like that, and what our hesitation was is to maintain. The potential for a future access to eighteen point two, um you know, and a future subdivision there, so. Um if there was an opportunity to, you know, in any agreement that is made for access or, you know, ability to achieve that. Through three point one, three point three one, then it um still maintains that ability to have the right of way through that lot to eighteen point two. Does that make sense?
Yes, I remember that now.
So barring the access issues, we'll push the access issues to the side right now and if whether or not you're gonna proceed forward with the site, with a um a lot merger. Uh we do need the renderings and the drawings, you're, you're in Ridge Press, you're in a view corridor, I mean. The board can't make a determination on a, on a, on a two D. Or non-rendered drawing, it's, it's what this board has asked from every other applicant that's in Ridge Press. Um so we're gonna need it from you guys too, we're gonna need the renderings, we need the colors, we're gonna need. All the information that is required in our Ridge Preservation and uh review, I mean.
We, we absolutely uh recognize that, appreciate that, and we'll provide that, I just think we've got to get off of this access issue. And then I think it makes sense for us to submit all that for the board's consideration, I mean, we're just still stuck on this right now.
Alright, so let's do, I think the board is, it can, would agree with you that we can authorize Mike and Steve to work with Kelly. And Natalie if need be, uh offline. To review the easements, review the access issues, uh come up what uh would work for access to the site. And get that all done behind the scenes, and then when you come back to us.
And.
And without, that, it, again, it's not approving anything, you guys are gonna work the legal issue out and present the plan to us, this board still reserves its entire right to say yay or nay. To the plan, um but. In an effort to not waste this board's time or your time coming back to the board and going back and forth. We've got to work the access out and and get that all straightened out.
Yeah, without that, we basically had nothing.
Right, so.
Too early, too early to schedule a public hearing.
No, I wasn't even thinking about that, Mike, because we don't have the drawings, the rendering, the pictures.
Yeah, we have it all here at this point.
We don't have anything like that, I just want not to waste anybody else's time with a, in front of this board until the access issues are all straightened out. Get that taken care of, come back with the plan that shows the, a proper access, whatever easements are required, whatever lot mergers need to be done. Um lot line changes, all that fun stuff, and then also with the Ridge Press requirements, the renderings, the colors, the pictures. And then we can review the application as a whole, and then then talk about a public here, that's all I'm looking to do. Is just get have.
I, I agree.
I I agree. I think we should allow them to talk.
I have no exception to that.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Um Chris, would you also consider authorizing a ZBA referral if needed? Um or would you prefer the applicant to come back first um with?
No, I mean, listen, it's gonna be on them, right? If they come, if they draw up a plan and they want to go to the ZBA and try to get variances on it and they come back to us and we say no to it. I mean, they wasted their time and money going to the ZBA, so if they want to do it.
Yeah, I I agree. I think it's premature to go to CBA.
Yeah, I think we need to flesh out for sure what's happening here with the access, which I think will give us more clarity on if a variance is required. And if there is one, what what size or quantity of that variance actually is required.
Yeah, and I'd like to see them come back to us first and then, you know, let us get our feedback. Because if we turn around and this board turns around and just says, you know, the position of the house or doesn't work in Ridge Press or something like that, then, you know, we've kind of wasted more time that we don't need to of the applicants we in the boards we don't need to waste. Does that sound fair to everybody?
Yes, sir.
Um I think that's it. I don't think really anything this board can do anything else tonight, right? Unless I'm, no, right?
No, not tonight, not on this application.
Alright, so we'll leave it to you guys to work that out, have a call, whatever you need to do. And then we'll look forward to your next submittal with the the access issues hopefully resolved and um the drawings and the renderings and all that other stuff that's required on the Ridge Press and ARB.
Okay. Appreciate it, everybody.
Yep, any question for us or we're good?
I think that's it at this time. How about you, Steve?
I'm good right now.
Yeah, I would just check the water connection again, because you had it going into an eight inch main. And I'm not sure if it goes all the way down Elmwood, but on Cedar, there's a four inch for domestic. Or residential use and the eight inches for the fire hydrants.
Yeah, I mean, it would require, if we went, if the reason why I proposed it off of um Elmwood is because we would end up with even more environmental disturbance if I made a connection off of the Cedar roadside. So we'd be digging up uh ground in both directions and on both roads. Um and we're not even sure yet at this time what our rights are to do anything on Skyline Drive that's unimproved.
I mean, Mike, typically what we'll do is we'll defer to Mickey. We'll like get his feedback on that and where they would or wouldn't be allowed to, what means they would or wouldn't be allowed to be tied into. So let them, let the water superintendent let us know and then we can discuss it further based on what kind of work they would need to do.
Yeah.
And there's an alternative.
And Natalie pointed out, some of those trenches would be fourteen foot.
Yeah.
Yeah, the war- the waterline trenches, I can, because they're under pressure, I can change those elevations. They don't need to be that deep. So I'm not too worried about that sewer might be a little more difficult because it works by gravity, but.
Right.
We'll we'll figure that out.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments or feedback from the board for the applicants?
No.
Alright, then we will see you after your next submittal, sir.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, everybody.
Good night. Alright, uh with there being no further resus- business before the board, I'll offer a motion to close.
Second.
Second by Mike, any questions? All in favor? Alright, see everybody in a couple of weeks.
Have a good night.
See ya.
Bye bye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.